Mr. City Council, please attend to call meeting of the city council be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 6:00 PM, Monday, June 10, 2013, for the purpose of a court session. In addition, make a thorough motion for a closed meeting by word of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simms?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
All right. Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, Deborah. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, we have two briefings and one late item. I may ask Dennis to brief us on the status of the elevator repair, and that will come after the briefing on the food trucks and the briefing on the seawall. At your March 12 meeting this year, you had a non-agenda speaker come and ask you to consider studying the possibility of permitting food trucks to operate within the city. And you asked me to ask the planning department to do a study, and we're here to give you the results of what we found today. You're kind of at a decision point, a fork in the road, so to speak. And you basically have two alternatives which we'll cover tonight. So to brief you on the study that was done by planning is Fred. Fred, would you come forward? Fred Russo.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Vice Mayor Cherry, ladies and gentlemen of council. I'm with you all tonight to report on the research. As you can see, it's filled up three-ring binder.
Right.
And a review of the food truck industry and the possible next steps that we need to take in Portsmouth if council wishes to relax our current regulations. As you can see on the slide and in the information we provided to you, food trucks have been around a long time. Initially, they started in 1691 in Amsterdam or New York City. They evolved into chuck wagons that you used on the cattle drives, and then the evolution continued. And in roughly 2008, the food truck industry as we know it today really was born in California. Portsmouth zoning ordinance does not allow food trucks in the city with the exception of the food cart vendors we have downtown. Mr. Rowe indicated on March 12, Mr. Corey Wells came before you as a non-agenda speaker asking that the ban we had to have it lifted or relaxed so food trucks could operate somewhere within the city. Staff began researching and reviewing regulations. We took it in three phases almost. First, we looked nationally and looked at people that had regulations. What have they done? Where did they think they were going and where did they end up, so to speak? And you can see a list of cities, and this is not every city that has food trucks. This is a sort of cross-section that we pulled out to show some of the representative cities that have adopted and allowed food truck regulations. It's nationwide. It is not limited to the East Coast, the West Coast, the Gulf Coast. It is fairly broad brush across the countries. What we wanted to do was to bring to you some of the issues and just say, here are the problems that have been presented and maybe solved by other regulations. And you can see there's a long list of items here, and we've abbreviated this just to get the ones that are common. And the idea was to try and tell you what we would have to look at as we go if you wish to, to the next step, or what we avoid if we don't go to the next step. And it was a number of things. The appearance requirements, they were talking on that. That was interesting because some places, they wanted them to be tied into the historic district theme and be approved. Others were talking about lights that were on the trucks. Some of them were flashing in different colors and things like that. So there are a number of subcategories to these that we have before you. Then we looked, I guess you'd say, regionally. Portsmouth's not the only locality in Hampton Roads area that does not allow food trucks. Hampton also does not allow food trucks. In the report, we listed some conditions that other localities has. Norfolk, Newport News, Virginia Beach, Suffolk, all have conditions. Some of them say they can't be in residential. Some say they can only be in certain commercial districts. Some limit the hours of operation. So there is no consistency between the Hampton Roads cities with the regulations that they have adopted. There were roughly five discussion points we wanted to bring to you. Some places have said publicly, public property is banned from having food trucks. Others use proximity bans. Proximity bans mean they can't be within anywhere from 50 feet to one city who was challenged in court and lost said 3,000 feet from a restaurant. So there's a wide spectrum, and the courts have weighed in on one case only. The others have looked at them in different means. Some localities say straight lines, some by length of travel, by walking distance, driving distance, things like that. There are restricted zones, and we do think as part of our discussion with you that there are restricted zones within the city. And we'll talk about that in just a second. Stop and wait, this is really what you have for your ice cream trucks. They pull up and sometimes they will stop where they see someone waving, and then they sit there and wait until they get the next customer. And that's what localities are saying they don't want. And then there are duration restrictions where you can stop, stay there for two or three hours, and then you leave. And actually, the food trucks do not want to be just sitting there waiting. They want to be selling to large quantities of people. So that could be an issue if they're selling to a large number of people and they still have a large line. Do you want to make them leave? In discussions with, preliminary discussions with military, schools, our own parks and recreation, we've found that there are some areas that we don't want the food trucks to be. We don't want them to be in the parking lots of the high schools, our elementary schools, or the grade schools. We've got cafeterias, and we look at a nutritional lunch program, breakfast program. We don't want that interrupted. We don't want them at the parks, city property. Military came in and surprisingly, they said, we do allow food trucks on our bases after they've obtained their security clearance. They don't want them within so many feet of the gates because of the threat of a bomb, but more especially the threat of a biohazard feeding bad food to their employees. They don't want that to be an issue.
But they'll let them inside?
After they've had a fairly significant investigation of the employees, the truck, their location, what they're serving, they actually have to fill out a contract, and apparently, they're inspected routinely to make certain they're not.
But didn't I read Newport News shipbuilding allows them outside of?
That's not a military installation. That's a private shipyard.
They call them the roach coach on the military.
Yeah.
That's what they refer to them as.
And that's no matter what the branch of service it is.
Who would police them? I mean, would it be our health? Would it be our? In most localities, it has found to be a combination. The health department would be issuing food handlers permits.
That's right.
And they would have to have a location where the trucks would go at night. They've got to have a place to clean the trucks, store their food, and the health department does not allow that to occur in a home. It has to be a commissary that they can inspect regularly. One of the issues that is being of concern is if you live in Chesapeake and you want a Portsmouth, then how do you work with the two health departments working together on that? So those are steps that we identified, but we did not resolve until we actually started creating the regulations.
Pretty simple on a stationary restaurant, if it's in Portsmouth, it's the Portsmouth Health Department. It's clear. There are two levels of policing. One is the Health Department with the issues that Fred just mentioned. The other is the zoning, particularly if you allow it and you say that you can't be in this area, somebody's got to police that, and that would be a zoning requirement.
But pretty much also we've prohibited them. So why are we going back to change? There must have been a reason why we said no before.
Well, that's a good point. And when we get to the end of the presentation, we'll show you that you are at a decision point, and you really basically have two alternatives now. That is a good question.
And the main point of why we're here tonight. We've mentioned, and you saw another slide talking about issues, but we feel that there are 12 issues that really need to be vetted completely before we could have an ordinance that, I would say, would be a model for the entire Hampton Roads area if someone else wanted to look at it. In the report, there was a sentence, and I think it's important to repeat it. Our desire is to strike a balance between allowing food trucks, if that's what your wish is, and to operate, and protecting the public and other businesses. I mean, we've got to do a balancing act, and the question is, do we want to make that step or not? And that's the question, I think, that's before you. With that said, we'd also wish to follow your lead. If you say, go do this, and we want to make it work, and we want to make it vibrant, then we would do what we could do to make that. If you say, Fred, the answer right now is no, we wish to stay here, then the answer is we would stay here. Decision points. Mr. Rowe has indicated we're at that fork in the road. Do we go one way and say, we don't want to do anything, we're happy with what we have? Or do we want to say, guys, let's look at this and study it some more and come back with some regulations? And I think that's the main thrust of what we're saying for the council tonight is to give us some guidance on where you would like us to go.
Now, if you decide on alternative one, we'll park it and we'll go into other issues.
No pun intended, right?
Sir?
No pun intended.
That's a pun intended. And the fork in the road, too. If you go with two, then we have a recommendation for you, and that is that you have a very large community conversation on this matter. You saw one of the nationwide concerns, and that's the unfair business advantage that these offer stationary restaurants.
That's right.
And so Fred, if you'll go over.
What we said is indicated, a civic engagement process, but the civic engagement process needs to be maybe somewhat directed by a citizen committee. And that citizen committee, and this is not everybody that should be on it, but it's who we were thinking that should, you know, that we can think of right now. You know, the EDA, Health Department, retail merchants, military, old town business, there are a number of organizations that we need to look at, and it's not just centered around the old town area. We're looking, this is citywide.
Any business association that would be concerned about this.
So really, this completes our presentation. If you decide on alternative one, that's great.
I would like for us to have that engagement piece done first before we make a decision one way or the other, because you're right, there are a lot of pros and cons there, and I would like to get input from our business community as well as the potential food truck owners, as well as our citizens. And then we can take that information and make a decision. I mean.
Well, it's a couple of things. I think the capital investment that our restaurateurs have in their facilities, I think it does create unfair advantage, and everybody knows that the restaurant business in Portsmouth, just like a lot of other cities, is struggling right now because a lot of people are eating out less. The other thing that is probably even more importantly is the possibility of cross-contamination. You know, food trucks don't keep their refrigeration going when they're parked off-site at the end of the day. So that food has to be transported to either a freezer or cooler and then put back on the truck the next day. And if it's between that danger zone of 41 degrees and 135 degrees where bacteria grows, you can get people sick. They also don't have restrooms, which is another inherent problem with them. And the water supply is very limited. It's self-contained, and without water, you can't sanitize utensils and wash things like you should. So it's a lot going on. With that said, you know, the state of California, and New York, and Georgia don't allow food vendors, mostly from a food safety standpoint. With that said, I think there's litigation underway from some food vendors class action suit in each of those three states because of it. But I think we need to make sure restaurateurs are part of the civic engagement, and also plenty of professional health people that know the dangers of foodborne illnesses.
Well, I'm sure if we elect to go forward with this, we've got the proper folks with the right oversight to make sure those issues that you talked about should be confined because they should have the right oversight to be able to have that. I think our piece is more of how we do it economically and then how we do it in such a way where it's when doing booming times and when you're in recessionary times, because you don't want to just make a policy because of one or the other. But I want to make sure we have all of the folks at the table to weigh in prior to. Ms. Simms?
I have two questions. I'm not thrilled with the idea, but I'm happy to have a conversation about it or a civic engagement process. Number one, other than Mr. Wells, has anybody asked for this? I mean, do we have the Food Trucks of America group coming in asking for this?
Mr. Wells is the only individual that we've heard of, and I can say this year.
It's the first time I've ever heard about it, ever, other than, you know, the occasional hot dog cart person or whatever that wanted to be downtown.
And that's probably true, but, and it's probably partly true because we, Portsmouth doesn't allow them, so they know that's prohibited. Because, you know, we have the food carts, so we allow those, and all those other issues exist with them. Let me finish for a second.
But I have a second question, too. I got two.
Oh, you got two questions? Okay, I'm sorry.
The second one is, if you don't have, and maybe I'm putting the cart before the horse a little here, but if you can't be on city property or sidewalk or school or outside of, where are you?
Construction site. There's the three areas that we would look at and say, would you want them on city property, which means, do you want them in city park? Do you want them at any of the golf courses, courses, any parks like that? Do you want them there?
That's a question.
That's a question. Then the other question is, do you want them on the public right-of-way, which would be in parking spaces and on the streets? And then the third question, which is fairly open in a lot of other localities, is do you want them on private property? Do you want them to be able to pull a truck up in front of Lowe's and set up there? And right now, we say no, you cannot even do that. So you are restricted.
So like the guy selling sausage at Lowe's is contracted by Lowe's to do that?
He's gone.
He's not in the course.
Gone now.
That I saw in another city.
But he, when he was, if he walked in the door and said, I would like to do this, Lowe's would have to be the vendor to do that.
And I think those are all the questions that need to be answered. But, you know, I read through you guys' research. You guys researched this back to 1691. My people were in bondage then. So I don't know how much more research you can do on this. I think if the, you follow your normal process of putting things in place with planning and the planning department, and all those people you talked about, where you vet it with all the departments, you vet this stuff with them and get their comments, I think you've got it. Because what else are you going to find out? I don't know. Y'all packed a lot in these 10 pages. You packed it from California to Durham, North Carolina, and through, and where they allow it, where they don't, what they allow. There's enough in here between all the cities but one, Hampton, that allow it, between what they allow and what they don't allow. I went through and picked out things, just circle. This would work in Portsmouth, this wouldn't. This would work in Portsmouth, this wouldn't, just from looking through, from reading through this weekend. So I think you dared to research this amount of those key people you talked about, have them weigh in, put that in the package, bring them back with a recommendation based on that input. Because you already done the work.
No, I don't think you need to do anything else other than, let's do this civic engagement piece so we can close the loop on everyone, because again, you don't want things to change. Times change, and people say, everybody's doing something but Portsmouth. And you look, and everybody changed their policies, and, you know, and you don't want to weigh it all based on what other people are doing. But if it's a fit here, if it works, and if we all concur with it, then we'll move forward. If not, then we will, you know, put a stop on it.
How's the food tax collected?
We started initial discussions with the Commissioner of Revenue. In fact, we did have a couple of meetings with their representatives. They would be taxed as a restaurant right now, but we would need to make some changes to their regulations. And I think it's important to note that not only is the zoning ordinance going to be modified, but the section on streets and sidewalks.
So if the truck is registered in Chesapeake, we would be?
That's a discussion point.
Yeah. Because the reason why I ask that, it's a challenge getting it now for a stationary facility.
And as we indicated, that's one of what we call the subtopics. You indicated about keeping it cool. You actually have an issue with the generators running, and if they've got the quiet generator, it's not bad. If they've got one that's not quiet, then everybody around it is paying to hear the generator run. So those are a lot of the sub-issues that we would have to look at, and we've tried to identify as many of those as we could.
How long could we do the civic engagement piece? Can we, within 30 days or 60 days?
I would say more like 60 days to really have a good community discussion.
And make sure we get everybody in the net.
Right.
Invite it to the table and have a chance to weigh in.
So how you envision that going, John?
Well, if you want to go with two, and it sounds like there's a majority that does, let us come back with a recommended size of the committee for you, and then you can populate it. It needs to, if you'll go to the next slide, certainly people from the Health Department, from the Business Association, some citizens.
Right, get some citizens.
And it needs to be a workable group that can sit around a table about this size, and that's not too, too big where nothing gets done, but big enough that it has good community input.
Ms. Randall?
I'm right along the same line that you're thinking. There are no preferential, based on what the model would be that we would set in place so that, it's just not in this part of the town, but if there is a section somewhere else that is equitable, that can handle it, it would be eligible. But we would all follow the same guidelines because it's really not fair to the citizens who are bearing the burden of the taxes in the city that one part is exclusively there and you all pay and to bill. Nothing is free.
Yes, ma'am. That's true. Fred, can we turn this in 24 hours? I think we can. Get the?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we can. We'll have you a concept at tomorrow evening's work session. How about that?
Perfect.
The size, and then you can start considering how you want to populate the committee.
Okay. Thank you. All right, what's next?
Next is a briefing on the seawall. We've got more than half a mile of seawall that serves as the threshold to our front door, one of our front doors. And it's like a bridge, a bridge over water that needs to be inspected.
Trouble waters.
We're full of good metaphors tonight.
Oh, yeah. Wheel on a roll.
Earth, wind, and rain. And since 1997, you've had six major seawall projects. That's roughly two and a half years in between projects, so to speak. And it's part of our infrastructure, and we have a seawall project, it's a small one, that's in next year's CIP. It's about $40,000. But we're talking about significant expenditures over time. So this is part of the learning curve to get you so that you're comfortable with, first, understanding the construction, because anything that's been built over time, you're going to find different modes of construction. And then, second, things that plague us as we look to keep the seawall in good repair. And James is going to, our city engineer, is going to give this briefing.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, member of the city council, here tonight to give you a briefing on the condition of the Portsmouth seawall and update you on the status of some of the future projects. Here, what you see is an overall snapshot of the seawall. It extends from the Ocean Marine Marina down to Title Water Yacht Club.
And while you're on that slide side, we think of the seawall, these segments, the Holiday Inn segment, the Renaissance segment, the seawall segment. You can see the distances here at the bottom.
Before you leave that piece, do you, can you just talk the construction phase, what's been renovated last?
Right.
Where's the last section? Will we, as you go through, were you talking those terms?
Yes, sir. Okay. Okay. The majority of seawall is constructed in the early 1970s with the section down by the former Holiday Inn site constructed on or about 1981. It's almost 2,500 linear feet long, excluding the two landings, the one at High Street and the north landing. We divide the seawall into four segments. You've got the City Hall segment, which runs from the Ocean Marine facility down to High Street Landing. You've got the Admiral's Landing segment, which runs from right about the flagpole, the Lightship Museum. And then you have the Renaissance Hotel segment that picks up from there and takes you down to North Atlantic. And then you have the segment, which is adjacent to the former Holiday Inn site and Harbor Tower. The majority of seawall is of a sheet pile and batter pile design, except for the Holiday Inn segment is a sheet pile design with tiebacks and a deadman design. I'm going to show you a little bit about that right now. So as you can see here, the majority of the seawall is of a batter pile design, and the Holiday Inn segment is of a tieback design. And this is a little indication of the sheet pile and tieback design. And what that basically is, you have a steel tension wire or rod that's attached to anchor the seawall, the structure.
You'd err to point that through there.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Anchor the structure here, this is the tieback. It's attached to the seawall typically by a brace or whaler. That's attached to a deadman, which is typically a concrete block, and that's in place to keep the seawall from tilting over. This is the batter pile design. As you see the sheet pile here, and this is a batter pile. What a batter pile is, is basically a steel beam on an angle or incline, and it's used to basically brace the seawall to resist it from sliding horizontally.
Now, if remember, typically, when you think about a pile, you think about something that's circler, and your mind might go to a wooden pile. This is not wooden, and it's not circler. It's a H, and James is going to show you what one of these things looks like.
This is during the recent work that happened down at Admiral's Landing. This was taken during construction, and what you see here is you see some of the batter piles. They're approximately 100 feet long. The steel is 5/8 inches thick, and the web section right there is 14 inches by 14 inches.
Now, say again how long they are?
Approximately 100 feet long.
So that's a 10-story building? I mean, this is not a short pile, this is a long pile. And because these things are metal, they deteriorate, and they deteriorate in different phases. They deteriorate what's above the water, what's at the water level that's affected by the tide, what's underwater, and then what's in the mud.
How they check? That's right.
He's going to tell you.
That's what we didn't get down here.
That's another picture.
And you can see how they're on a slant, like James told you. They're on a slant to keep that sheet pile from coming into the water. And if you took one of those, how tall is Admiral's Landing? It's not 10 stories. So think about how long that pile is.
That's anchoring.
When you pull it out of the ground, it's, that's right.
I wasn't going to be doing that.
Okay, this is an image of the City Hall segment. Okay, this section is approximately 900 linear feet long. The last time it was inspected, what we witnessed was a 20% to 30% material loss. The last time it was inspected, what we witnessed was a 20% to 30% material loss, which is to be expected for that age. This pile repair project actually speaks to work that's scheduled to happen this summer along the entire seawall from the yacht club, not the yacht club, but North Landing, down to Ocean Marine Facility. What that is, is approximately 20 piles that need to be repaired, some miscellaneous concrete repairs, repairs, and some wooden pile replacement adjacent to the North Landing. You mentioned how it's inspected. The parts you can see visually, inspected by a structural engineer. Typically for the parts underwater, we have divers to go in and inspect that portion. This is the Admiral's Landing segment that was taken during the failure. Section's just under 500 feet long. In 2010, approximately 100 linear, 150 linear feet failed because of deterioration of the batter piles. At that time, we had people go out and inspect that whole section for the remaining batter piles, and they were found to have 30% material loss, which is consistent with the remaining sections throughout the seawall.
How old is, how old is it?
Which part?
This piece right here from the Admiral's Landing.
Well, the part that's just replaced is a couple of years old, but the rest of the seawall basically from the point out here down to North Landing is 1970s, so it's just over 40 years old.
And most of that behind the sheet pile is film material. If you look at any old photograph of the waterfront over time, you'll see where it's been filled in with who knows what. So you've got a lot of different chemistry going on.
Jimmy. They dumped it.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, so you have a mixture of concrete, debris, organics. A lot of times, the existing wooden seawall was left in place, so that's experienced some deterioration over time. Here's a picture of some of the failed batter piles that were pulled out during that project.
Now, to get you oriented, this is the pile right here. This is the H. And you can see that, he talks about 30% loss, it's 30% of that metal is gone. So it's losing its structural integrity.
Correct.
Yeah. Almost an instructural.
And the materials you provided say you had 50% loss in the Holiday Inn sections?
Yeah, but that's a different, remember, that's a tieback. That doesn't use this type of construction.
Have there been advances in the materials used during that 40-year period?
There have been. You see in some cases where you have seawalls made of composite materials, but the typical standard design still prevalent in the industry is the sheet pile design, steel sheets.
So we could probably safely say every 40 years, we're going to be faced with this problem.
Norfolk is running into the same problem in some areas.
What is the cost per hundred foot, the Yova cost or estimate?
We have an estimate coming up.
Oh, okay.
Okay, this is the Renaissance Hotel segment. Timber piles under the deck and the North Inlet, which is the southern corner right there, the side opposite, the ferry inlet. You have some piles that need to be replaced, some dolphin piles that need some work.
Explain what a dolphin pile is to...
Dolphin piles are the cluster of piles you see typically as a 13 or 17 pile cluster. They were put in, actually some right out front here for off sale.
They're outboard of the seawall, they're tie-up buoys, I guess you might say in the vernacular, for them, for ships to tie up against.
Yeah, the, one of the, the long sailboats was tied up for a while for the first off sale, because the dolphins out in front of City Hall. The 2010 inspection revealed that steel batter piles were rusted and showing signs of deterioration. And once again, you see the 25% to 30%, which is typical for the majority of that seawall. This is the Holiday Inn segment. Now, this is the tieback and deadman design. It's just under 700 feet, and an inspection in 2006 showed average material loss of 30%. Some sections had material loss of 40% to 50%. There was also deterioration of some of the fenders, and also similar pile duration is seen in the rest of the seawall. We started the design for replacing this section of seawall back in 2009.
So in order for us to really move forward with this, we are going to have to start doing more innovative ways to make things more stable in a shorter span of time than spreading out, because the longer you leave it out there, the more deterioration that's taking place. And you're losing part of what you are putting in to build it up before you can even get to the point of reinforcing it.
You're going to get to basically a situation that we have to...
That's right.
...for our bridges, where you're going to have to increase your inspection frequency.
That's right.
So you're going to address some of these issues as they come up sooner, rather than the inspection schedule that they're on now, which is typically two to four years, you just increase that frequency. In 2011, we discovered, just by happenstance, that there was a significant amount of rip rap dumped outward of the seawall. Basically what was happening close to the time when it was constructed is that the bottom toe started to kick out, and to keep it in place, they dumped barges of rip rap in front of the seawall. That rip rap extends 15 feet out to the channel. It's going to require a significant design revision, because the current seawall that we're designing was going to go outward. But with the rip rap being there, you're not going to penetrate that. And the core only allowed us to go, I think, two feet, two feet forward into the sea. So anything we do is going to have to be on the landward side.
And just imagine, any shoreline that's got rip rap. If this is the edge of the seawall, you got rip rap coming down on a slope like this. And then it's through the natural course of tides, it's zilted up. And on the surface, it looks like mud, but you dig into it and it's rip rap. And it extends, as James just said, 15 feet out to the channel. So this presents a very interesting and costly situation.
So we're currently reevaluating the design and trying to verify the location of some of these tiebacks and deadmen, so that we can update the design and come up with something that'll work, seeing as how we can't go with the design that we're originally intended on. The estimated replacement cost of the original design is 3.5 million dollars.
Just the design?
No, for the replacement. Sorry.
Good girl, I need some of that work.
Okay. This is a condition summary. Just to refresh, this is a condition summary of the segments here. City Hall and the Renaissance Hotel segments show deterioration consistent with their age of approximately 30%. Admiral's Landing segment has experienced some, Admiral has experienced some areas that exceeded the expected rate of deterioration. We saw that when that section failed, that was replaced in 2010. Some of the piles associated with this section are scheduled for replacement and repair later on this summer. The Holiday Inn segment has a different design than the rest of the seawall, but because of the conditions we found with the rip rap, we have to go back to the drawing board and redo the design.
And while you're there, this becomes one of the things that we have to consider when ultimately the Holiday Inn site is developed, because before that development takes place, this repair should go in and be done while the site is clear and you can have a staging area for the work that's done here.
But this rip rap problem is only on that segment because of that design, correct?
Right.
Right.
Now, is it money already in place for this, or we have to appropriate?
That's why we're having this discussion, is that...
Don't have to find a way to get them.
And in future CIPs, there's a small amount of money in next year's budget. I mean, small compared to 3.5 million. There's about eight times, that's 40,000, about eight times that in the next year program. And so as we start developing solutions, we'll program the out-years in your CIP.
So we have a developer wants to buy that piece of property. We're still going to spend more money.
Well, and that's not to prejudge, you know, what that deal is. That deal may include. But remember, most urban deals that are taking place require some type of public-private partnership. Most recent is the deal in Norfolk. So a lot depends on what goes there and what gets negotiated at that time.
We have, what, $8 million tied up in that piece already?
About that. And you'll get that from the sale of the property. The way it's set up is that when that property sells, the proceeds from the sale comes back to the city.
Oh, you gotta put an additional three and a half, huh?
I'm sorry.
It needs, yes, sir.
That's for the whole, that's for the whole seawall.
No, that's just for Holiday Inn.
Holiday Inn piece.
That's just Holiday Inn, sir.
That's just Holiday Inn piece.
Not the whole seawall. I wish it was.
But we need to build a new city.
When we did the inspections, well, one question I had, you want to increase the frequencies of the inspection. What kind of cost, can y'all give us that tomorrow?
Yeah, we can.
And when, they were inspecting it before, during the design stage, they didn't see the rip rap already in place?
The rip rap got put in during the construction of that portion of that seawall.
Right.
And...
But through the design build piece, we didn't inspect the, we didn't do soil samples or compaction or...
I don't know. I mean, that's been...
Because I'm pretty sure it's, I'm pretty sure it's kind of costly to do a design build, now we got to go back to the drawing board.
This would not be a design build project. This would be a design bid project.
The rip rap is buried.
Oh, buried.
Yeah. It's...
Good evening. The rip rap that's in front of seawall is approximately 10 feet below the mud right now.
So you got 10 foot of silt buildup.
Mud on top of it.
Right.
It got, the channel got dredged, I believe it was last year by the Navy. So that profile went down a little bit. How much?
They deepened it.
No, no. But they took a lot of that silt out. But we found out by mistake from a gentleman that was part of the construction.
Original construction?
Yes, original construction. With a discussion, he said, do you know there is some bunch of rip rap down there? That's how we found out.
We didn't know that.
No, we did not. And it was strictly by chance that we found out this information. So whoever did the construction thought that this would be a cool way to keep the toe from...
Picking it up.
Picking it up. Turning it out to sea.
Didn't think about 20 years in the future when the thing had to be replaced.
Maybe it works that way.
On the segments that we would replace, since the Holiday Inn site, we don't have a, any development plan in place now. Admiral's Landing obviously is occupied, but what's the recommendation? Admiral's Landing piece first?
Well... Let's get to this slide. Okay, we have some recommendations for moving forward. First is to move forward with the small pile replacement repair project this summer. We would also complete the investigation that we're currently going down the Holiday Inn site and finalize the design based on those findings. Then the next step would be to re-inspect the entire seawall section, basically from the North Landing down to City Hall, determining if there are any significant repair options that you need to address immediately. And then basically ramp up your inspections based on what you find during that inspection. And as you can see, the estimated cost to replace that seawall section right there, minimum $20 million.
And the interesting thing, this is a shocker number, but think of two, that's, you've got a, almost a $25 million asset right there. And it's, again, because it's in the water, and it's saltwater, and you got that chemistry, you got the chemistry of the soils happening behind it, we're going to have ongoing repairs. There's not a magic pill that we can take and it'd be good forever. None of our bridges are that way. And so think of this like a bridge. Now, one of the things that we're going to do is that that seawall is 15 feet of the sidewall. We're going to make it a multipath, where bicycles and pedestrians can be on it. I mean, think about the quote-unquote seawall at Virginia Beach. Not skateboarders, but bicycles. We've researched this, 10-foot is what you need, we got 15, so we can have a multi-use pathway. We want people to use this, this front door.
And they do use it.
They do.
Yes.
Oh. The North Landing, is that at the High Street Inlet? Is that where you're talking about?
No, the North Landing is the section right there by Harbor Tower.
Oh, the Renaissance. Okay, so you're right here.
Can you go back to...
So Renaissance, the Admiral's Landing, the City Hall pieces estimate about 20 million bucks. So you're looking about 25 million total for the whole...
Right.
And what I said, I mean, think of, yeah, those, if you had to replace it, it'd be 25 million, but also look at it, it's already there, so you've got about a $25 million asset that gets depreciated. But it has tremendous value for the city.
So are you saying all those segments have to be done at once?
No.
No.
But that's why I asked the question about Admiral's Landing.
I think the inspection that we do later on this summer is going to let us know what the critical pieces are, and what needs to be done as far as the priority. Go back to slide 12. Slide 12. Other way. Do you have to redo all of that that you just did?
No, no, ma'am.
Not necessarily. So that piece? This was, this was a massive failure, so, no. Right, I mean, I recall we spent well over a million dollars to fix that. Right. Because it was a choice of like 800 to put on a Band-Aid and 1. something to supposedly fix it.
Make sense, you did the whole thing.
And we opted to fix it.
That's right.
And I'm asking Earl Cheatham through Yusuf to identify what the, what the city property line is too, because this shows brick here, there was brick there, but that's been taken up. The brick's in right there. There are depressions because the soil's unstable. And we can go back and replace the brick, if it's our brick, but it's just going to get unstable again. So we're looking at some treatment that we can put there.
It's sinking there again.
Yeah. If it sinks, it's an easy fix for us.
And that pool's brand new.
That's right.
No.
Don't be taking the pool down.
But anyway, we wanted, this has been a real good discussion, because we wanted to tell you that although it's a small amount of money in this year's budget, there's some big expenditures down the road as we get more information about what we need to do.
Where's the Churchill Bridge and all that, in that CIP?
Let's, you want to give a, we had a very interesting discourse, Dana, James, and I, with Dave Foster, who was doing a piece about the public hearing that VDOT was going to have on the six-year plan. And it looked as if VDOT had stepped up and put $29 million into that project.
I can change, right?
And if it was, it was a surprise to us. Call us any day that you want to, Dave, with that type of news. And it come to find out, it was the way that it was styled, it was styled that this is the city's responsibility, and it just had it in the plan. So it's still a very much meagerly funded project.
It's funded in stages. Their project software, the way it's displayed, shows a project estimate. The only thing showing in their estimate right now is the revenue sharing for the design phase, which on their part is 1.25 million, on our part, 1.25 million. So it shows that balance of that's the remaining portion. The revenue sharing piece for... The revenue sharing piece for right-of-way clearance hasn't gone through the state budget process yet, so that piece doesn't show up yet. But they are committed to 1 million for the right-of-way clearance as well as our 1 million match. So you draw that down and you're left with approximately 25 million for their project. Now, we are, once we get to that point in the design and that stage further down the road, we have the capability to apply for more state funding, whether it be revenue sharing or some other mechanism, and even try to get federal funding, which may cover even more than the state portion. But once we get to that phase as far as the design process, then we'll make those applications for additional funding.
And remember, there's another conversation that's going on too about what to do with the quote-unquote additional money, new money that's coming to the Hampton Roads region out of the most recently passed House Bill 2313, what?
2313.
Yeah, 22.
Coming to us.
Two or three?
Three.
2313, which provides statewide more money and then for Northern Virginia and Hampton Roads. And there's gonna be some arm wrestling that takes place at the regional table. Do you build more capacity at the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel or do you do the third crossing? Well, it depends whether or not you're representing Hampton or Norfolk. But what should not get lost are the important projects like the Churchill Bridge. Bridges are really important. They, people assume that they're safe until they fall into the water. Okay, well, any other questions? Any guidance?
I'll sit there. And just in summary, what was the whole purpose of this briefing here?
To get you up to speed. Again, when we talk about the engineering aspect of the project, what's a batter pile? I want to make sure that people understand, it's just not your, the pile that you set a cottage on. And this is a steel beam that is as tall as Admiral's Landing that goes into the mud. So that you're not surprised next year, when we start getting more information about what we need to do, whoa, John, what's this big number and what didn't you tell us earlier? There's not, the sky's not falling. This is not a chicken little presentation. We're not...
So y'all are gonna do an inspection sometime this summer?
Right.
Can y'all brief us when the inspection comes back? So we don't wait till next year?
Yeah.
You meant seawalls not falling?
Yes, sir. We're really good tonight. And want to do, Yusuf and James, aren't they good?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Good information.
Yes.
They are really great. We're blessed to have them. Now we got...
Thank you.
The mayor's healthy initiative had two elevators go out, so everybody had to use the steps. And it got so bad that we said, I told Dennis, replace them. And so Dennis, how about bring us up to speed on what the status is?
Vice Mayor, Chair, members of council, good evening. For the last 30 days or so, we've taken a significant amount of heat over the condition of the elevators or the lack of reliability of the elevators. And it's, we deserve that. In 1996, we went under a contract with a company called Blue Ridge General Elevator. Or, Blue Ridge General was, did a very good job for many, many years. And about four years ago, they were bought out by another company called Atlantic Elevator Company. And the new company became Atlantic Blue Ridge Elevator Company. And since that takeover, we've had a significant number of issues with the elevators in City Hall. And we sent them a letter approximately 45 days ago notifying them of multiple deficiencies, the lack of reliability of the elevators. And we outlined several things that they needed to do in order to maintain the contract. They did better for a short period of time. And then we had a pretty significant problem with the elevators where they were dropping. They spent every day in this building for over a week trying to identify where that problem was. And finally, they said, "We don't know where the problem is. You need to really look at replacing the elevators." We talked to the manager and the manager said, "Proceed with getting quotes to replace the elevators." So we called in some companies and Tissen Krupp was one of those companies. And they came back and said, "Well, look, we would really be happy to provide you with a price to replace the elevators, but we don't believe they need to be replaced. We identified certain things just in our inspection that we feel like maybe are some of the problems." So we authorized them to come in and work for 24 hours. We have a 24-hours labor window to come back and tell us what the problems were. And they came back and they said, "We definitely know what the problem is." So at that point, we stopped. We sent a notice to Blue Ridge General Elevator Company notifying them that we no longer needed their services because the two companies can't work. When companies on, elevators are very, very tricky because there's so much liability. And one company is under contract, another company's not gonna come in and work on it while this other company's under contract just because of the liability. So we eliminated the original contract, brought Tissen Krupp in. They did another day of surveying on the elevators. They got one of the elevators up and running. And during that timeframe, we were working with the building official. And the building official said, "Look, we need to make sure that these things are right. We need to bring in another, a different elevator inspection company." So we did that. National Elevator Inspection was the company that we had been using. We brought in another company to do the inspection after they brought the first elevator back up online. And National, the new elevator inspection company identified multiple safety issues with Elevator 2, which is the south elevator, passenger elevator. And they also identified multiple problems with the freight elevator, which is on the single elevator. We have agreed with a contract for Tissen Krupp, which is a national company, very well-respected, to come in and do about $15,000 worth of work on the elevators to get them back up and running. We're expecting, hopefully, one of the parts that's due in for the passenger elevator to be here tomorrow. The parts for the freight elevator may take longer because the previous company had pulled a bunch of parts off of that elevator to try to get the passenger elevator up and running. I will note that the elevator inspection company noted that there were safety, the previous contractor had jumped out some safety switches that should not have been jumped out. We got all of that cleared up. In closing, I'd like to say that, you know, elevators are very specialized business. You can't, building and maintenance normally will contract out elevator service because, number one, it's so, it's so much liability that goes along with it and it's such a specialized business. These guys are trained forever. So when you go out for bid and you bring in a company who specializes in elevators, you expect to get a certain level of service for that. We did not receive that once that takeover took place. So we're very comfortable with Tissen Krupp. They are nationally known, they're a quality company, they have a lot of resources. They are more expensive than our previous contractor, but they're under the NJPA contract, so we were able to bring them in without bidding because they've already been bid out under the National Joint Powers Agreement. So that's where we are. Hopefully, by the end of this week, we'll have at least one of those, the second elevator back up and running. And the freight elevator, again, there's some parts that are missing that they took off to try to replace, to repair the other elevator that's gonna take some time to get back in.
So we're talking $15,000, we'll get all three of them back up and running?
Yes, sir. Not to exceed that.
Once they get up and running, what type of maintenance contract are we gonna enter into?
We'll have them to do their normal routine checks and all. We're, we'll be under the same maintenance contract that we had before, but with a different company.
Okay. What was, what was the cost of replacements?
About $400,000.
What's the age of those elevators?
Building was built in 1981. So, now, we did do a major upgrade about...
About 1980.
We did a major upgrade on the control system. We went from the old relay system to an electronic computerized system about eight years ago. So the controls, what we're talking about being 1980 elevator is the cab and the hoistway. Everything else was replaced.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Good job. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, going back to the question you asked about the seawall while we were briefed. I've had a citizen who asked me, "Why isn't more of our CIP devoted to the seawall improvements?" And I didn't want you to get the same question and not have an answer for it. So I thought if I'm getting asked, you might be getting asked too. So in addition to getting you educated, I wanted to make sure that you did not get blindsided.
Okay.
Very good.
That's it.
Is that it?
Yes, sir. We were told not to be long-winded.
Not to be long, yeah, we've got earth, wind, and rain coming and...
Tornado. Tornado warning.
And lightning.
Last issue here, real quick. All of you should have a letter in front of you from the school board and the chair, addressing and asking if we would reconsider our previous position in these $960,000 for the paraprofessionals that they need. As you all know, the school board elected not to fund those positions because they did not have the money. And their position is, they can't put a budget together based on what they think they may save or what may happen. They have to go with worst case. And because of that, they did not fund those positions. And so they're sending by way of a letter, basically asking us if we would consider or reconsider our initial position of appropriating $960,000 so they can go and get these paraprofessionals this year. And this letter actually came out the day of our last council meeting. And I didn't think it was appropriate to bring it up because I think we had only had it within the hour of the meeting starting. So I figured, wait and bring this up this time around. So essentially, they're asking for us to consider giving them that million dollars to get those additional, well, not additional, to get the paraprofessionals there. And I think part of our logic that we were, we were using the first time around was to see them use and implement some of those savings and to be able to get that other piece from the savings piece and looking at the way they have to craft their budget and the legalities of overspending a budget. I think we even mentioned in there that we would revisit the matter about mid-year. So if things weren't going as projected, that we could, we could do that. But they've elected not to take the risk of going out and hiring people and doing something without knowing that they have the money. And I think you can kind of appreciate their position on that matter. So what is the flavor of the council? Do you think we should give them the money now? If they're gonna make the effort to go make the cost savings with going, changing over the insurance piece and some of the other things? If those things are realized, and I think the superintendent mentioned the swing, we could possibly save a million or they could lose a million. And the way they're programming and setting their budget is they have to go in terms of if we lose a million because we can't set a budget and overspend it because it would be unlawful. So you can use that as however you want to view it. I think if they go and do the savings and they get the money, if the money is still there at the end of the year, we'll still have it. So basically, all we're doing is fronting...
Putting it up front.
Putting the money up front so they can go get the paraprofessionals. And when they do that, if they realize the million dollars, it should be left over in the, in the balance of the budget. Am I saying that right? You don't think so?
No, I think, I think we said, we agree with you, Mr. Dr. Stockwich, you know, about your teachers. We asked him what was more important to him. He said, "Teachers." We agreed that both were important, both the paraprofessionals and the teachers.
Please, let her...
And, and then we suggested half cash, half savings. Vice Mayor said very specifically to Dr. Stockwich, "If you don't make this work at the end of the year, we'll make you whole, but we want you to hire both." And the very next morning, I read in the paper, Dr. Stockwich saying, "Well, we don't have enough money to do this." So, no, I don't want to give them another dime right now.
Exactly.
I mean, I feel like we...
Same way.
I feel like we extended above and beyond what we agreed to do with the plan, and they need to follow the plan too.
I don't have a problem because I wanted to give them everything that they needed right up front anyhow. Rather than looking at the school as a budget item, I think we need to look at ours as an investment. And when we look at it from that point of view, I think we'll try to do everything we can to make it above board and to stand where it needs to be.
I concur with that. I guess sometimes you have to walk in the shoes to know what it's like to try to operate and give you the results that you want in your city and not have the sufficient funds and things to take care of at least what you need for the children and the staff. And the children are our future, whether we recognize it or not, because we aren't gonna be here forever.
And if we are going to really believe that the children are our future, we need to invest in them now so that they are prepared to take the roles that we're in now. I can't see, because of other things taking priority, how you cannot see the young people coming up because those of us who are older are gonna move out and somebody's gonna have to carry the load. And I'm saying, I think they've been very, you know, I just feel that if they wouldn't ask for anything if they didn't need it. And I happen to be a representative of the liaisons with the schools. And I think we need to, if we can't afford to do it, let's do it. They are our future.
Okay. Mr. Meeks?
No.
No?
No.
We guaranteed them the money, Mayor. I came up with an idea, I asked others what we could do and if we, and he said that teachers were the most important thing to him. And I came up with an idea that the council agreed to, to get the 1.3 million dollars. Ms. Simmons came up with an idea for the million dollars. And we said, we guaranteed them, as she said I did, she didn't misquote me, we guaranteed them the money if these things didn't happen, so...
Their position, though, is even though we're guaranteeing them the money, if they don't have it up front, they can't budget for it, so...
Mayor, every budget is an estimate of expenditures and revenues.
That's right.
To include ours. And so, and at the end of the year, you either made it or you didn't. But in this particular case, in this particular case, it's guaranteed. We guaranteed them that money. And if this doesn't work out for them, we're gonna give it to them. So I don't, I don't see, I don't see...
But their position is that they can't overspend. It's illegal for them...
They won't overspend.
...to go and put in a budget if they think there's an opportunity or risk that they're gonna lose money. They can't go in and do that as well as go hire these additional aides. And we're saying we're guaranteeing them the money. So I'm saying, if we're guaranteeing them the money, why don't we front them the money? And then whatever is left over at the end of the year, it's gotta come back to us anyway.
Well, there's not a good history of that, is there?
That's right.
Well, it's a new day.
We got four.
And I think, hold it, Mr. Moody. You can leave if you want.
No, you can leave if you like. I'm not in a hurry.
The issue is here, guys, we've got the school system with these young people that are starting kindergarten, and we've, over this last 10 years, have had that number decrease from 24% of these kids not being ready to start school. And now that number is around 10% or less. And if we continue to not allow them to fund these positions, by the time these kids get in third grade and take that SOL, we're gonna be heading right back down the path we worked. And are we gonna let that get in the way of whether or not we manage the money right? We give them the right oversight? We give them the money up front? The issue is, we need those paraprofessionals in those classrooms. And I think we all agree.
I agree with you 100%.
And because of, let me finish.
Let me finish, sir. And because of their requirements and what they're mandated and must do to be able to approve a budget, the school board and the superintendent elected not to do that because they need to know they have the positions. And I think part of the rationale he gave with some of the other savings that they have is he has to cut in the front of the year to make sure that he does not overspend the budget. So when he winds up with those surpluses, it's because if there's an opportunity that may arrive that they overspend, they cut it up front. So if they had to cut teachers or don't fill a position, they do those things on the front end to make sure on the back end, it is not in a deficit situation. So that's understandable. I mean, we don't have to do it if four of us here don't. But I just hate to get those kids who, again, the first time we test them is in third grade. How many years are we gonna allow them? And I think this is the second year. We'll be going into the second year in those kindergarten classes with no paraprofessionals. And I say, we're going to pay dearly for that on the back end. And if it's worth having a closer oversight relationship with the budget piece, I say, do it, but I think we need to give them that money, so they can get those people now. And if we're sure... John, you said the study said they would make, on converting the insurance piece, a million dollars they could save possibly? Was it about a million?
A little bit more than that.
And I think he said, if he get the stop-loss insurance and then what the other things that may factor in, the possibility is they could lose a million. So they're, they're setting their budget based on the worst-case scenario, so they won't overspend the budget.
I don't agree to the analysis that they're going to lose a million.
Okay.
It's, as far as self-insurance is concerned, we've got a, we have a good body of knowledge on that. You can save money on that. The Governmental Finance Officers Association validates that. That's the professional organization of local government and state government finance folks.
I'm saying, but look at it from their position, do you understand why they're saying, "Because we can't..."
No, sir, I don't understand.
You don't understand that?
No, sir.
Or you don't agree with it?
I don't understand the conclusion that they came to, and so I'm in disagreement with it.
Okay.
And they do have an opportunity to work with you all. You asked them, them being the school board, to work hard to eliminate duplication of services. Again, we don't need to have two payroll departments, two purchasing departments, and those talks have been shut down. The only thing that we're going to bring about, and we worked hard and we pushed hard for this, is the maintenance of the motor pool. We're going like gang busters. Come July 1, we'll be maintaining the whole school fleet. But there's still money to be saved. There's a lot of low-hanging fruit. And because of that reluctance on their part to eliminate duplication, I've held a purchasing position vacant, on the hopes that we could have only one purchasing agent in this building. We're going to fill that position, because there's no desire on their part to bring about this cost savings.
All right, so we've got four that's not in favor of giving them the money. Dana, you, Paige, and Bill. Okay, all right, we're done. We're adjourned.
I think we need to...
Did you want to say something?
We'll see when we have discussion.